...to the point where we cannot get out of our driveways. There's a certain curvature to the road near Elizabeth Street that you can't even see the cars to a certain point. So with more traffic just leads to bigger problems. I don't understand why it's such a big perk that there's being traffic diverted from Oak Hill. It is not the main thoroughfare through Delaware. Central would become closer to that than Oak Hill. It really only connects Sandusky Street to about Montrose, so it is a back road. Granted, I'm sure they'd be happy with less traffic, but it doesn't get as much traffic as William. For the parking, our driveways are all pretty small. I probably have one of the biggest ones. It's longer. My house is the only one on the block that sits quite a ways away from the road. The rest of them are about maybe five to 10 feet off the sidewalk. So wherever you would add a lane would be, of course, as you've talked about, getting rid of that curb side grass all the way to the parking or to the sidewalk. My yard's the only one that would be able to take a hit in terms of getting rid of anything. I do have trees at my lot. And then any parking for our visitors, if we have guests, would definitely be minimized if we had to get rid of any street parking. The OU students that live there don't really have that many cars, so in terms of the nine person difference, it would be more of a car difference than a person difference. There would be definitely a lot more traffic. Let's see here. I have, there's just a lot. I mean, in terms of construction, if you had to add more sidewalk to be up to code, if you had to eliminate anything, on the south side of the street, it's just hill. And as I stated before, on our northern side of the street, there literally is no room except for my yard to take anything away. The noise, I know it's supposed to be pointing east towards the dorms, but noise carries. If you're having a large gathering of alumni, that could get, I'm sure, pretty rowdy. And even the people just directly across the street would not be, wouldn't have any blockage. It would be us, you know, more to the west, we'd have a little bit more of an advantage there, but the people directly across the street would have all of that noise. The house that is supposedly in contract, that is not the lot to be taken down but to remain, if that's supposed to be a rental, would it ever have a chance in the future to not be a rental and get rezoned as of this? My concern is that if we let this one go and then the next one go, it's just going to move down the block or just turn into rentals or apartments, whereas there are a lot of family homes there that are actually staying in those homes and like to take care of them instead of a possible issue with landlords. But other than that, in terms, I mean, you guys talked about the drop off. I mean, if it's busy and someone does try and turn around on the eastern side of that building, there's, you know, it's Parents Weekend, and there's 20 cars that are trying to pull around, and you're causing an issue. The people who don't listen to the not turn left, you're already really close to the light there, so there's not a lot of leeway in terms of being able to maybe get into the left turn lane to get onto Elizabeth Street. So other than that, that should be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Clayton?
Clay.
Oh, that's you?
All right, you're good. We'll move on to the next one. Nick Elmerson? All right. Sorry if I butcher these names. I'm not great at reading some folks' writing. And Pat Manley? Just moving through the list. Tom Wolber?
Just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Tom Wolber. The address is 272 Halfstone Drive in Delaware. I'm passing around a sheet of paper which also has that, all that information. And I'm going to skip over some introductory paragraphs. You probably know what I'm here for. I spoke last month. I happen to be a member of the Shaker Commission for many, many years. And I'm here to talk about trees. This time I'm a little better prepared than last time. I looked at the tree ordinances chapter 1168, and I have some quotes in this paper. The Shaker Commission is tasked to maintain and protect the trees and the tree canopy in the city of Delaware. All trees that are removed due to development purposes must be replaced in one form or another. And by the way, that according to the tree ordinances, that applies to all zoning districts without a single exception, including areas zoned ecstatically. The property we're talking about encompasses a total of 473 caliber inches. The stated plan is to remove 320 caliber inches of these trees. The shortfall is thus 320 inches, not 167 inches. Therefore, applicant, from my point of view, would be required to make a payment for the $2,000 into the tree fund, not $16,700. It's stated in the documents. To me, that's a form of fuzzy math. And the only explanation I found so far is that somewhere in your documents is the sentence, credit shall be given on a caliber inch basis for any permanently preserved trees. This notion of code-on-code reservation credit seems to be at the heart of the matter. The Shaker Commission has never accepted and never approved this concept and would be very surprised to hear about it. When we presented our annual reports to City Council in April, there was no awareness and no mention of any policy change. And to this day, I do not know if there was and is a policy change. The Shaker Commission, in our speaking session, did not have any capacity to the Shaker Commission with knowledge in March or May and may not be in June, but this matter is of course urgent. The Shaker Commission is aware in concern that somehow this reservation credit concept has entered into the back door, it's moved back to into several recent development projects. The EEP project was on the table in May. And perhaps the BIA has something to do with it. The Shaker Commission in April unanimously approved a resolution asking that a member of the Shaker Commission be present at meetings between the city and the BIA when issues involving trees are addressed. If the issue conversation about, about preservation credits, the Shaker Commission would like to be a part of it.
If you could please wrap up.
Yes, I'm at the last paragraph here. So this issue has created unnecessary conflict and confusion among members of the Shaker Commission. Planning Commission may or may not have been aware of this. This is an issue that has little to do with the current project, but it is a general project, a general problem that the city and the city staff needs to address. You know, I'm here to ask for clarification. There is no need to create, you know, to continue this conflict and confusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolber. Roger Koch. Coke. Apologies for the butchering of the pronunciation. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Roger Koch. I live at 125 North Liberty Street in town. And I've had an interest in the historic properties in the area for some time, both downtown and in the rest of the community. And I'm on the board of the local Delaware County Historical Society, although I am not speaking for them. All of the comments about zoning and traffic are all valid comments, and I did not come to address those at all. I came to address the architectural and historical value of this house. In spite of a number of years of neglect of the current owner, no, the previous owner of this property, it really is in a remarkable state of preservation. It is a remarkably historic and significant house in this community because of who built it and who lived there. As I'm sure you probably know, this was the home of Professor Hiram Perkins, who was a faculty member of Wesleyan for many decades. And he built this house. He also saw to it that the Student Observatory right next door to it, to the east, was built under his reign in the department. The house really is in remarkable preservation. It looks, it looks sad and tired, but most of the damage is just paint, and it needs some pointing and some restoration. I have to tell you that personally, I'm very pleased that Mr. Manos is planning to restore and renovate this property and add on to the back of it. I think it's a remarkable house. It's one of the most significant remaining historic houses in the community, owned by one of the most significant residents. It's a remarkable monument to the past. It's in really pretty good condition. What I would like to ask is, as a condition of the zoning for this project, which I'm pleased will save and preserve this house, I would like to see the alterations in the preservation work on the original historic part of the house be overseen or at least receive the approval of the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Delaware. I think that's a reasonable request. I don't think there would be any unreasonable conditions. It would just ensure that some of the really remarkable historic detail on this house would be preserved. And it's, it's just to find an existing example of Delaware in its 19th century heyday to allow to be modified and compromised. So that would be my request, is that as a condition of the rezoning and the approval of this, that the exterior preservation and restoration of the house be specified or overseen by the Historic Preservation Commission of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That is everybody who signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on this? Sure, you seem very excited to speak. Why don't you come forward and state your name and address for the, for the record?
Hello, my name is Tom Tobin. I live at 253 West William Street, and I will be significantly impacted by this rezoning and development put all together. First thing I would like to say, just sort of following up on what our Historical Society person said, that it is a beautiful house. It should be restored. It should not be torn down. To turn it into something other than a restored single-family home, I think is a travesty to the community and to the memory of Hiram Perkins himself. So to turn it into a hotel, I don't think is the right move at all. I wanted to address some of the issues that were brought up in this. Number one, the issue that, hey, we're trying real hard to keep everything to the east so that there's no noise to the west. Where's most of your noise? It's in the parking. People pulling in, people shutting doors, people getting out, loading, unloading, having conversations. Once they're inside the building, it's probably going to be fairly quiet, which is furthest away from the neighborhood. So we're going to be more impacted to the west because of the parking on the west to begin with. So this idea that we're keeping it quieter or more noisy to the, to the east is ridiculous. I also, he's talking about the aspect that, oh, this is going to be great for our restaurants and whatnot. What I'm picturing is that we have something now that is open 24/7, coming and going all times of the morning and evening, maybe pizza deliveries, maybe other types of deliveries, walking around our neighborhoods in the middle of the night where we have families going, growing, and neighborhoods happening, and you have this transient group of people coming in. The idea that it's truly just going to be for Ohio Wesleyan use, it's a public hotel. So who knows who's going to be there, what types of people. There's security, there's safety, there's all kinds of things that are happening now. A six-foot-high fence is ridiculous. It needs to be a minimum of eight foot. The fact that this is a three-story eliminates all privacy to every single yard to the west because you're up on that third floor, boom, you're looking straight into everybody's yard. There's no privacy. You can't put a high enough fence to give us the privacy that we need there. I was, I just found out about the contract to the neighbor directly to the east of me, which is to the west. I was very disappointed to hear that. They were not for this project. It's fantastic that he has the money to continue to just buy up additional properties and make deals to get what he wants to have happen here. Now, I'm going to be living right next to a rental property with no buffer, no fence coming up on my side. Is it going to be student housing? What type of people are we going to have? It was mentioned before, and I couldn't agree with it more, and I'm sorry, I know you said about repeating, but down the road, maybe he's going to decide that, hey, let's rezone this too. The hotel's doing well. I think I want more rooms. I need more parking. Let's push this over, okay?
If you could please wrap up your overtime.
There's one possibility. The other possibility is that what happens when this, if this hotel doesn't succeed? What happens to the people hanging out in the back? What happens to the property? I would love to see this property restored. I would love to see the house exist. Many of the homes on William Street have been restored and have gone for a fairly good market value, and this would be a sensational home for somebody to renovate and live in and add to our community. A hotel is not what we need here, and it does greatly impact. Also, I know you said to wrap up.
Can you please wrap up?
But the inset parking that you're, that he's proposing, that's still public parking, even though they're going to say it's for these, these houses, anybody can park there. So there's no guarantee that that is any benefit to the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here tonight who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay. Can you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Cheryl Hodgson, and I live at 256 West William Street. And you might be wondering what you can add at this point. What I want to add is the perspective of somebody living, I live in that long skinny house, right, catacorner, somebody living on the north side of the street, because you don't know that unless you live there. It's never going to show you on your map. I sit in my house. I'm pretty close to this very, very busy street. All the dirt from the trucks and things comes off. When trucks and things go by, my windows already rattle. So the idea of somebody widening the street and increasing the traffic, I feel like it's going to make my house unlivable and unsellable. It's already kind of a disadvantage, but I bought it knowing that, so that's fine. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, which I don't know how important it is, is just was a misstatement. I checked, my house is in the northwest neighborhood. So it's not maybe in the northwest neighborhood, but it definitely affects it. So I don't know if they have anything to say about it or not, but I emailed them, and I do live in the, I'm on the very outer edge of that. So I don't know what the relevance was, but somebody said that isn't the case, but it is. So I just wanted people to know what it means to a person living in that space if there been a wide road, even a foot is going to cause a problem for me and everybody else along there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Tobin. I live at 253 West William. I am also affected by the information that we received about our neighbor's house being turned into an investment property. My husband spoke earlier. For me, my concern too is what is again, student housing, or is this going to be opened up to a family? That's going to also increase a more additional parking, lack of parking on our street when you put investment property, because you're going to have, if it's, we already have students parking on that street in the school season as well, taking up spaces. The bump in, again, you're going to eliminate, are you eliminating space when you're going to cut in? Because if you're going to have a space, you're going to pop in, go out, and come back in and make it just accessible to that front of those homes? Does that eliminate spaces? Which is a concern to me with also an issue that we're having with parking down there and the traffic. Traffic is just tremendous. Trucks, school buses, kids. You're cutting into a parking or a sidewalk. What's going to happen when kids are walking that sidewalk, riding their bikes? Are you eliminating that space of a parking or of the sidewalk? How small are you going to cut that sidewalk in? How close is it going to be up to someone's house that I'm going to walk by? I wouldn't want people walking in front of my house, and I wouldn't want to walk that close to a house myself if I'm out walking. And a lot of people walk nowadays. We want to get out. We want to get fit. And you're taking, you know, it's making it more noise, which is going to, you know, not allow people to go on those areas to walk. But I think you're unraveling the fabric of our stable neighborhood by putting a hotel three stories high. Would you like to walk out in your backyard and look at a building like that? Would you want people looking into your home in strangers? What, you know, who is transit people? Could bring drugs, loitering, kids hanging out, prostitution, all kinds of things happen at hotels. And if it does become vacant, what happens then? What happens to my neighborhood? I mean, those are things that I want to consider. I see what's going on today, but what about tomorrow? Change, change, change. We live in a changing world, and we got to look ahead. I got to look for the families, the kids that play in the neighborhood. Are they going to be able to play out there safely with strangers? We, we know what happens in hotels. Shootings come out of hotels. People are found dead in hotels. Yeah, this is supposed to be Ohio Wesleyan's parents, but you can't dictate who stays in a hotel. It's an open door again 24 hours. I don't know if there's been studies, my property value. What's going to happen to my property value with a hotel that's two doors down from it? Is there going to be any kind of mitigation form or funds that are going to be put aside or studies that's going to tell me what's going to happen to my property value? I mean, those things are important to me when I go to resell. Who wants a hotel beside them? Who wants an investment property beside them? Who wants to come down the street and they can't park?
If you could please wrap up.
Truckings, when they bring in their deliveries. Where are those trucks going to stop? Are they going to be able to pull up in that driveway? Are they going to stop in front of there? Are they going to deliver things, you know, from that, like the postman when he stops? Or the UPS guy? Where are they going to stop? Are they going to pull up there? Probably not. They stop on the street. There's a traffic light, not even, I don't know how many feet from that driveway. Things to consider, again, trucks, kids, buses, everything goes down that, and it's, it's an in and out of Delaware. So I mean, to me, and the noise that's going to be associated with that, you know, the trash. I didn't see where they're going to have a trash dumpster.
I'm sorry, you're way over. Can you please wrap up?
Trash dumpster, odor. I want to make sure, you know, we have rodents and things like that that's going to be, you know, from a hotel. So I'd like to know where the trash, you know, dumpster, is it going to be cans or is it a dumpster?
Thank you. Are there any members of the public left who'd like to speak on this particular case?
I would.
Sure. If you would please state your name and your address for the record once you reach the podium.
I have notes on my phone. It's not on. Hi, I'm Diana Happler. I live at 134 Oak Hill Avenue. And as I understand it with this design, our backyards are going to be affected by this parking lot. This parking lot is going to come back to my neighbor, Pat Carr, who's with me, and butt up against, I think we're going to have 10 feet. So you're going to have parking behind our houses. And now you've got another house that's going to be used as rental property or whatever. So there's no guarantee that I'm going to go out in my backyard and I'm going to enjoy what is a historic residential neighborhood. You know, my house was built by Mr. Morrison, who started a company here in Delaware. It was built in 1901. Part of the allure of Delaware is this old architecture and how beautiful the houses are and restored. And she brought up a great point, you know, it affects your property value. The single biggest investment most of us have is our house. And especially with older homes, restoring them, making them pretty. Putting a, you know, putting a hotel in the neighborhood is, is just not, is just not a wise thing to do for us. I certainly, you know, I understand that Perkins' house should have been restored a long time ago. Somebody in the Historical Society or someone should have taken that on because he really contributed a lot. But, you know, as I see it, this is not a benefit to the people that live and work in this community. Mr. Manos does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this topic tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission and staff, and I'll just go ahead and have the applicant come back up, and we'll work through as many of these questions and comments as we can. There are a lot of things that the public brought up that really aren't the onus of what we're talking about tonight. There's a lot of things that this body can't address, and we're not here to address property values and safety and things like that. We're here to look at this case based on a set of planning criteria. And just so everybody knows, that there's a very regimented process behind this. So the Planning Commission will either make a decision or not make a decision tonight, and then it will go on to council for probably a minimum of three readings. Am I correct in everything I've said so far?
Correct. I think it's just one clarification, a planning commission that doesn't make a decision, they make a recommendation, a formal recommendation to City Council. City Council makes the final decision on all these cases for all of us as elected officials.
Okay. All right, so we'll stop at the top of the list and start working our way around. So one of the consistent things I'm hearing again is, is about the traffic. I know we've kind of gone through the traffic and how we feel about it. So this, this curb cut in the north side of the street, do we have to have that? That seems to be a concern many people are bringing up. They're concerned about it being public parking. Right now, it's really just relegated for the residences, and I'm hearing that concern. So if you can speak to that.
Yeah, sure. So the curb cut to the north to maintain parking is the only way to fit a left turn lane into the site.
Okay.
Without widening William Street to the east or to the south side of William Street, excuse me. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, pretty much it has to be there for this plan to work as it is today.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
First off, the, the parking indent on the north side of the street, so the Tobins sidewalk is not changing. So the curbs are, that three parking spots are on the north side of the street. Also, to clarify that, Clarence's tree is not affected by, by that.
Okay.
So we have the drawing. I know it's hard to see there, but we have, we can open it up. So no one's parking in front of Clarence's house, and his tree is still there.
Okay.
And if I also may add, there's parking already there. It's on the street. We're just, we're just moving it in. So, and I'm paying. So I would, if they don't want it, they want to leave it like it is, they can.
And that's the
City council makes the final decision on all these cases for all of us as elected officials.
Okay. All right. So, we'll stop at the top of the list and start working our way around. So, one of the consistent things I'm hearing again is, is about the traffic. I know we've kind of gone through the traffic and how we feel about it. So, this, this curb cut in the north side of the street, do we have to have that? That seems to be a concern many people are bringing up. They're concerned about it being public parking. Right now, it's really just relegated for the residences and I'm hearing that concern. So, if you can speak to that.
Yeah, sure. So, the curb cut to the north to maintain parking is the only way to fit a left turn lane into the site.
Okay.
Without widening William Street to the east or to the south side of William Street. Excuse me. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, pretty much it has to be there for this plan to work as it is today.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
First off, the, the parking indent on the north side of the street. So, the Tobins' sidewalk is not changing. So, the, the curbs are, that three parking spots are on the north side of the street. Also, to clarify that, Clarence's tree is not affected by, by that. So, we have the drawing. I know it's hard to see there, but we have, we can open it up. So, no one's parking in front of Clarence's house and his tree is still there. And if I also may add, there's parking already there. It's on the street. We're just, we're just moving it in. So, and I'm paying. So, I would, if they don't want it, they want to leave it like it is, they can.
And that's so that the left turn lane could be included?
Correct. And if they needs, they can take some of my property, but her, the south side sidewalk is not going to be affected. It's the north side.
The, the parking's actually for the homes on the north side. I don't know if that was clear through the conversation, but they're not a requirement of the parking for this use. So, actually, the, the middle home there doesn't have a driveway and those people are currently parking on the road. So, it was intended to make it safer for them where they're parking there now.
So, that is not intended as public parking? That's actually parking for the residents?
It's on street. But it's not for the hotel. It's not intended for this issue.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I see what you're saying.
Also, the young lady that came up, Paige, I think it is, there, maybe not. Her, we're not cutting in anywhere near her house. It's the three houses directly across the street. We're not cutting in by her house.
Okay.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. Now, you've got me totally confused. It looks to me like the cut in on the north side of the street encompasses 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, at least six houses.
No, it's three.
It's three.
So, now, we're just going to have the one in front of the three houses. That's it.
Right. And Clarence's?
It's not going to go all the way up as this drawing here shows.
Correct. Oh, I, I don't know. Could I take the liberty to jump in and answer that question?
Yeah.
Please. Because I, just in the, in the, you know, to be transparent and everything, that exhibit that you're referring to is one that I drew that was in response to the drawing that shows the turn lane. And the one that's on the screen, which shows the turn lane, our belief is that transition period from the, the left turn lane to the west will need to be a little longer than what is depicted there to meet roadway design criteria. That drawing there, yeah.
Is this the correct one?
Well, that's the one I prepared as, just to convey sort of our conceptual requirements. That's not final engineering that they prepared. That's something I did.
This is what they're preparing.
That's what they prepared there. So, I do believe that some additional impacts could happen to parking west of that exhibit that's on the screen. So, some additional homes could be impacted.
Jim?
Depending on what the final engineering drawings.
Just to be clear, there's an exhibit that in the right side is labeled City of Delaware Engineering Review Concept Plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I've got that plant. I don't know what we're going to approve.
Well, so, this is the engineering. This is, you're not approving this. This is the engineering department's concept plan to show that if a turn lane was required to be this long, that it might impact parking that long on the north side of the street. What Jonathan's saying is that obviously, we're not the final engineering yet, so we don't know exactly how long the turn lane is. But however long the turn lane is with the tapers, whatever that impacts on the north side of the street, Jim is, Jim Manos is going to have to go get a buy-in from those neighbors to cut in the parking that might be required to fit in that turn lane or he might have to do other improvements on William Street in lieu of doing that. Is that fair, Jonathan? Does that make sense on the two diagrams? And the other diagram is the applicant's proposal as it sits right now, preliminary.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So, in summary, the applicant's proposal currently shows three spots. However, the city feels like depending on how this all nets out in the end, it could potentially take up to, it looks like maybe 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 residences. But that's, that's just conceptual at best.
Okay.
I believe that's why the staff recommendation is phrased the way it is.
Correct.
So, I'm looking at this again, and on this drawing here, it's your proposal. All right? So, we show here 1, 2.
Three spots.
Three houses.
Yes.
All right. Now, we show on the second house relocating the existing power pole. What, are there front porch or what? I mean, yeah.
No, the, the span, actually, the span on the north, the south side of the street is about three times as long as the, I mean, we would have to get rid of the pole at my expense and.
You're not moving it in their yard.
Whatever the city may, no, no, no.
It would, it would just be shifted literally if, if it has to be there at all. It would be shifted literally. It wouldn't be pushed back.
Well, either, either way you move it, it's going to be in somebody's front yard.
Can I say something, Mr. Halper here? Columbia Gas has just put a new six-inch gas line right down along the south edge of that sidewalk. The pole that's being discussed actually delivers electric to three houses along the Culloden Gate. The very pole he's talking about.
Before, before you sit down, you just had to state your name again.
I'm Karen Hall.
Okay. Just so we know, we're listening.
I don't think any poles will be added. That pole can be removed. Just looking at the span on the south side of the street, if you remove that pole, the span is still not as long as the south side of the street. Again, I'm not a, I don't know how.
Sure.
If you got to change the wire, but, you know, I understand that's my expense.
I think we need to be conscious of where that pole goes.
Sure.
In retrospect to somebody's house. Okay? I mean, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
I understand it has to be moved, but I think, you know, you need to be very cautious about where we put it since we've got short front yards. That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm, you know.
Yeah. And I'll, if you want me to go through these Roger Koch, who I've dealt with before and have had neighboring properties and good relationship with, I'll absolutely work with him in the, in the historical district, which I've, I've done before. I will say that the, most of the windows, I mean, those are going to have to be replaced. So, but other than that, as far as keeping the existing building, the staircase, everything, absolutely, I want to do that.
Are you, are you open to adding that as a condition to the approval? I don't know if that's appropriate.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I can't keep the windows. I mean, they're a single pain if some kid breaks and they cut his arm off and half of them are gone.
Jim, to be clear and transparent, what I heard Roger suggest is that with respect to renovations to the existing home, that you would, planning commission council would, add a condition that any of those have to go before HBC and be reviewed and approved by them. My position would be.
On the interior?
No, on the exterior. My position would be that I don't disagree with the sentiment, but you're not subject to the historic district as it sits today. And the gentle lady had a question about the northwest neighborhood, which is a, a neighborhood and in part international register district, completely different than our local historic district with our local requirements. Just to answer that question while we're on historic preservation. So, I, I'm not sure you're going to, I appreciate your sentiment. My thought is that perhaps there's a middle ground where you, you just pledge to work with.
Yeah, absolutely.
The commission and perhaps that's sufficient. Obviously, a staff, we, we play the, the administration role between the commission and applicants all the time and we could certainly do that in this case on that, on that property as well. And it's probably well worth consulting with our, our expert commission in that regard.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it's up to you and it's up to the commission ultimately, but you'd be subjecting yourselves to additional rules that you're not subjected to right now. If you want to do that, then you should probably tell.
Well, I think, I think Roger, I'm going to speak to your group.
My answer would be that I would work with Roger hand in hand. I don't want to have to get an approval every time, time I do something, but I think Roger can respect that. I hope. As far as, you know, respectfully with Diane's, Kathy's, the Tobins', I'm a real estate guy and I highly, highly, highly doubt a fraternity house that's three stories and two doors down is going to be less of a deterrent with graffiti on the side of it than a top-notch hotel, respectfully, as far as their house values. The other comment about the screening, if you look at the picture, the rental house, obviously, it's, I want, I'm not going to rent to students, trust me. I've been in that game before, but that house kind of masks their house from the parking lot, if you will. And I'm very, you know, if they want me to put an eight-foot fence up there, I have no problem. If they want me to put an eight-foot fence between my house and the rental, I don't have a problem with that. If this doesn't work out, they, I'll be their new neighbor.
Just to stop you there, I think the, the city actually caps the height of a privacy fence at six foot. Is that correct?
Well, typically, yes, but we're in a, at least for these two subject properties, we're in a planned mixed-use overlay and so we could require an eight-foot fence along the, the parking lot to the hotel side if that's your desire. I think as a, as an addition to that, you could require, even though it's not zoned in the PMU, the, the Jim's property that is an option on, have a privacy fence six or eight feet because it's connected to this case. I mean, six foot would be our typical maximum along that next property to the west. So, you could do that as well. He's offered it to do, do a privacy fence. Base code to answer your question is six-foot privacy fence in the rear yard.
As far as the shade tree commission, Tom, I mean, whatever the numbers are, if it's 16 grand or 32 grand, whatever, it is, it is. I'm not trying to hide. I mean, they told me that number and I didn't ask. So, whatever it is, it is.
Sure thing. The only thing I would say is I, I just recommend having an offline conversation with the appropriate parties to address any concerns that might be had in terms of tree preservation. I think we need to go over that here. Unless you want to, everyone?
I'd just say that that's been a longstanding inclusion of planned mixed-use overlays. There's nothing backdoor. It's been discussed before shade tree before, maybe pre-Mister Walber's time on that commission. And it's been included in, as a, a different tree schedule in addition to many different schedules contained in planned mixed-use overlay. This schedule is exactly the same as the other planned mixed-use overlays in that it does give some tree preservation credit that does not happen on a, you know, a by right plan basis.
I think in conclusion, drugs, prostitution, since I own the home, it's been broken into and there's graffiti all over the side of it. So, that's the, I'm not saying it's a bad neighborhood. It's not. The other comment about being 10 feet from people's backyard is not the case either. There's a lot in between us that is fully treed from Oak Hill. And again, you know, density-wise, I'm looking at 29 people instead of 20 on average. And going from a three-story frat house to a three-story hotel that's 14 feet wider and 32 feet deeper, I don't think is, is going to hurt anyone's home values.
Sure. I know this is pretty far down the road. We're in preliminary. What, what is your thought process been around deliveries and how that would happen, size of truck?
Well, we have no food service whatsoever. We have no laundry service that'll be done on-site. I mean, if a FedEx truck comes in there, I doubt if they're going to go on the street and walk up the hill, they're going to pull in the driveway, come in my driveway. As far as trash, we do not have a dumpster. We have receptacles. Again, there's no food service. That's on the south end of the building. It's in cans.
So, overall, you're aware of the staff's recommendations? I think there's 17 of them. It's nothing that you're getting caught off guard or surprised by and it's something like you're willing to work with them.
I'll do whatever it takes, yeah. And I've, I know, I mean, I've done a lot of work here in the community, which I was a little taken back by Diane's comment that, you know, I've taken contaminated gas stations and the worst building downtown Delaware, four of them to be exact. And, you know, I, it'll be first class.
There's one other question I have. Someone brought up noise, Dave. I was just wondering, in terms of the rooftop patio, are there any ordinances or restrictions that would be placed on that? It's kind of atypical because it's not part of a food service establishment, but what would, what would rule over that in terms of?
Well, our, as it stands today, we don't have any additional language within the text with respect to that. It is oriented block by the building and oriented toward Ohio Wesleyan. So, there's that to consider.
Sure.
But we have general noise ordinances on the books, which it would have to comply with. But we don't have any additional hours of, you know, of use restriction for the proposed canopy pad this time. You could add that as a condition. Although, again, the buildings, the building as proposed and the orientation of it, I think is going to block that noise. If it was on the west side, I would have a different opinion.
Okay. And then, and just to kind of help, just a general understanding in terms of future use of the rental property, just a real 30,000-foot look at the property owner rights in terms of they want to rezone or redevelop in the future.
Yeah. There were a couple of comments about what we in shorthand kind of call use creep. We've talked about that term before. If it's, you know, these two parcels, what keeps it from being the next two parcels? Well, in zoning, whoever owns a property could bring forward a proposal on any parcel in the City of Delaware, and they often do. That's part of the point of the planning commission of city council. However, I hope it's very transparent that at least what we tried to do and what the applicant tried to do in this case is not change a comprehensive plan, for example, and really contain the in-use to the property that's today's zoned, planned office institutional, which conditionally allows such use. So, it's really the parking lot that, in my judgment, we're talking about here in addition to the other, the other issues. So, anybody can bring forward a, a proposed change. I think what we've tried to do is really head off that issue as much as we can within the laws that we have to work with by clearly showing that the idea is not to have any use creep here in the future down the block. But could anybody guarantee that for you till the end of time? No.
Okay.
I think.
I don't have any.
You had another question in there, Mr. Chair?
I don't have any desire to expand it.
Oh, rental, the other point you made was about rental property. Anybody can rent any property, anywhere, anytime according to zoning laws and federal fair housing laws. There are some covenants and restrictions that get fought in courts in that respect. But we've had, for example, in the depths of the recession, we had parade of home houses that were built here in 2005 that became rental homes for a period of time. So, any property could be rented. We do have a restriction in that it is a single-family zoning district and a single-family house in this case we're talking about. And so, the restriction would be no more than five unrelated people in that home or occupants in that home. There would also be building code and minimum square footages for the amount of people that could be in that home that would have to be complied with as well. That I guess is the answer to that.
I think we did. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I'm going to bring this back to the planning commission for further discussion or entertain any other wish of the commission.
I just have one, Dave. I didn't see a master application form included with this.
I, we have it. I don't think it got into the pack, but we do have.
Any additional questions for, for staff this evening from the?
Well, no, because this is basically, this is, this is the first preliminary.
Correct.
So, I think a lot of the questions we have on our traffic and stuff like this and, you know, all have to be decided after they get out of this preliminary. You know, city says this, they say this. You know, I, I think as far as the trees and their planting, for the trees and stuff that's in there, that it has to go in front of the shade tree commission. So, they will get a shot at it. I. Commission, so they will get a shot at it. I, I really hope that you do work with Roger and his group on the exterior of the house. I don't think you're planning on making any changes that are totally necessary for the safety of people, whether it be windows, because we have that going on downtown. I think what he's concerned about is all of a sudden you decide, which I don't think you're going to, don't get me wrong, you're gonna tear that Cooper hood down. Eh, we don't like that. They're gonna chop her off, man. I mean, things like that, okay? But I don't think that you people have, have any intentions of doing that. But I still think it'd be nice if, if, when you get that far along, you could bring them in and at least show them what you're doing. You know, I think it'd be a nice thing, I do, to make the citizens and everybody else know that, hey, look, you're very transparent about what you're doing, okay? I mean, that's my feeling at this point right now. And since it's preliminary, what comes back in the final could be somewhat different. I hope.
What is the wish of the commission, then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2018-1026, along with all staff's recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Montzoros.
Second by Mr. Badger.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2018-1027, along with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Montzoros, second by Mr. Badger.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2018-1028, along with all staff recommendations.
Second. Motion by Mr. Montzoros and second by Mr. Badger.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, Item B. Could the clerk please read that into the record? Actually, hold on just a second.
Excuse me, Chairman. I just wanted to state on the record that we did have some technical difficulties, but they're fixed. So if you do wanna go back and watch the video for any reason, you won't get anything until public comment part. My apologies.
That's okay. It happens. Thank you for the clarification.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew. That's why we don't have a full meeting so far.
Okay. All right. Whenever you're ready, you can proceed with Item B. Make sure you're recording.
I got that. Okay, Item B, the Wilgus property, Case 1, 2018-0955. A request by Planned Communities Inc. for approval of a rezoning amendment for Francis and Mary Lou Wilgus on approximately 89.618 acres. Parcels number 419-220-02-005-000 and 419-220-02-007-000 from A1 Agricultural District to M1 PMU. Light manufacturing with planned mixed-use overlay district at 2781 Airport Road, located on the western terminus of Sawmill Parkway, east of Section Line Road, south of Airport Road, and north of the future extended Sawmill Parkway. Case 2, 2018-0956. A request by Planned Communities Inc. for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU planned mixed-use overlay district to be established for Francis and Mary Lou Wilgus on approximately 89.61 acres. Parcels number 419-220-02-005-000 and 419-220-02-007-000 at 2781 Airport Road, located at the western terminus of Sawmill Parkway, east of Section Line Road, south of Airport Road, and north of the future extended Sawmill Parkway.
Thank you. Will be, Dave, are you taking this one tonight?
Yes, I-
All right.
I have them all till last one, that's true.
Yeah. That's for last, right?
Yeah, sorry about that. Elaine, I apologize for all the parcel numbers. You did an excellent job again. I, I don't think any of the coming up cases have that, so, if it makes you feel any better, but-
Until council.
Until council, where you gotta read them all again multiple times. But in any case, this is for the project known as the Wilgus property on the southwest side of our community at the end, essentially at the end of Sawmill Parkway, as it sits today. The property is going through the annexation process with the county and with the city at the present time. I believe the annexation is sitting on a council's agenda for final acceptance. In part, the applicant wanted to begin the rezoning process to as closely align the annexation with the rezoning as possible. It won't likely perfectly align, and I think we're all understand that and are okay with that. But this would rezone the property, which today is in the county, of course, to be in accordance with a planned mixed-use overlay that is similar to the neighboring properties and Innovation Court and the properties to the east. Aerial photographs should we need? It's pretty much tabletop farmland devoid of many, or really hardly any, if any, trees on the site. However, trees would be accounted for as per our normal customary process, and within the zoning text divided within the PMU should be approved by council. The comprehensive plan future land use map shows light manufacturing. And with this case, the decision was made amongst the applicant and staff that, given that the property is nearly at 90 acres, it is in our Commerce Park area, and it is difficult to anticipate a, exactly how a property might be cut up, given an end user. There could be an end user that takes all 90 acres. There could be an end user that takes a series of 30 acres or six acres or some combination thereof. It made more sense then to write use controls and design controls that you see within the zoning text, define the area. Now, there's no need for subareas on this piece, in our judgment, and simply require in the zoning text that any future development proposals will have to go through preliminary and final plating and planning, whether or if those end users come forward, and we all hope that we can work together and obviously make that happen. That's the goal. So a little bit different approach on this piece of property in that an end user isn't kinda pre-identified in this case. But again, with 90 acres and in Commerce Park area, that is not surprising to us as staff at this time. I think, hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review the zoning text. There is no detailed plan to go over. Airport permits and FAA permits would be required for any future development as per normal customary in this area proximate to the airport. And all, as it stands today, all future extensions of utilities and roadways would be, have to be borne by the developer, and that does not exclude the opportunity to enter into development agreements with the developer or end developer and city council at the end of the day as a result. So that may come forward in the future, or it may not. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to this.
How prolonged in the process of annexation is this property in the city?
As I say, it's just requiring city council's final, acceptance of the final annexation, and then it would be certified over, and it would be annexed.
So we're talking a month?
Well, the Ohio Revised Code process allows for about 120 days from the date it's first submitted. So I believe, Elaine, that's coming up in-
We have to-
The next council meeting?
Action has to be decided by the June 11th.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a 30-day period from when the ordinance would be enacted.
Typical reference.
So the county would be notified June 10th, or July 10th, excuse me. It'd have to count 30 days exactly out, so.
So by the time the zoning is at council for action on the second or third reading, however many readings they choose to take, the property will be annexed, and we will be in a legal position to be able to zone the property at that point in time. You're making a recommendation, so you're not, your action would not rezone the property. And it makes sense to us to try to dovetail those two activities wherever we can, although the timing is prescribed to us by Ohio Revised Code for the annexation, so.
The process actually began in January?
Yeah, it begins with a resolution of services, what services the city can provide and as well can provide to anybody who's looking to annex, and that would be approved by council in that timeframe.
Any other questions for staff? I'll invite the applicant to come forward, please, if you just wanna state your name and your address for the record.
I'd just like to state while, while Jack's walking up to the microphone, good to see you, sir. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you very much. I've been, had some medical problems here the last couple weeks, so, thanks, Dave. Jack Brickner, the Director of Development of Planned Communities, 110 Northwoods Boulevard, Columbus, Ohio. Here representing Francis and Mary Lou Wilgus, the owners of the property, and we've been working with the staff for probably about eight months or so on this application, and I think we have everything pretty well covered from a zoning application and paperwork side, we've very much taken off Amir, if you would, of the Innovation Court to the east of us. We're assisting them in the sales and marketing of the property. And no matter who was gonna look at the property, two big things they need to get out of the way is annexation and what the zoning is. So that's what we've been focusing on here for the last many months. And once we get those out of the way, hopefully, working with the city here over the next, you know, 30 or 45 days, then we can take a more aggressive standpoint on marketing the property. I have had a chance to go through the, the commission's report, I'm sorry, the staff report on it. The, all the items one through nine that have been listed here are things that we've discussed with staff, the engineering department, the development section of the city here. So very familiar those. Aren't surprised at doing any of us, don't have any disagreement with any of them. So feel very comfortable with where we are in the application and the recommendation from staff. Entertain any questions that yourselves may have, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just with more and more to handle, I pre-apologize for the fact that I'm gonna do this with a couple cases tonight, in that we, we make errors of staff. So we do have an error.
Did you repeat that?
We make errors all day. Engineering department, of course, never makes an error. And Elaine never makes an error.
I would like to repeat that.
What do, what do we have tonight?
I said that two meetings around. I said, with respect to our formal recommendation, there is what I consider to be a typo, but I'll just put it on the record. Number one, the first sentence says, "Any future non-residential development of the subject site shall require preliminary and final subdivision plat in preliminary to subdivide." The, the words "in preliminary" there are extraneous and should just be deleted.
Do we need to vote on that, or are we good just to strike it?
No, I'm just telling you, that's my revised recommendation.
All right, any questions for the applicant? None? Thank you very much, and I'm glad you're feeling better.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any members of the public here tonight who wish to speak on this particular case? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the planning commission. What's the wish of this body?
Make a motion, we approve 2018-0955, along with all staff's recommendations and-
None conditions.
And conditions, with one change to the number one, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it all, so. And preliminary. Remove "and preliminary" right after the final subdivision plat. Correct, Dave?
Correct.
That's what we're moving. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Halter, second by Mr. Volnek.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve 2018-0956. And there are any conditions or recommendations on that one.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Volnek?
Mr. Badger? Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Well, I always have to go first. I'm also going.
No, I agree with you.
No objections here.
No problem with that. We're just glad to have you here, as we explained you when you first came in again.
I love it. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda under regular business, Item C. Could the clerk please read that into the record?
Item C, Case 2018-1061. A request by Delaware Bible Church for approval of a conditional use permit for a temporary trailer modular classroom on approximately 7.53 acres, zoned R3, one-family residential district located at 45 Bell Avenue.
Thank you.
See no parcel numbers? Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is for Delaware Bible Church. A conditional use permit, which is really about the length of time with respect to having a temporary trailer for a modular, modular classroom. Easy for me to spit it out. Now, the property is located at the corner of South Sandusky and Bell Avenue. It is in a couple of different zoning districts. You'll recall, there was an old Ponderosa out front along South Sandusky Street at one time, and so that explains the, the red here, the commercial district, and the school occupy, school and church occupy everything in black, which is zoned R3, single-family, and B3, commercial. Now, the portion of the property subject to this case is R3 residential, kind of near the back of Bellevue Court, as we'll see. So this is an aerial photograph of the property, and I'm gonna just get up the screen and show you where the trailer's gonna go. It's supposed to go along the west side, just in, in this area, actually across the circular drive. One of our recommendations and conditions is that it move so that to a 360-degree coverage by a fire truck or an ambulance squad that might come in rather than the rest of the drive, as a chance. This is really hard to read, even on a big screen, I'm sure, but you get the sense that this is a relatively small modular trailer in respect to the size of the overall property. Here are the specifications for the trailer. Trailer does exist today and is, would be purchased and moved to this site. It has been used as modular classroom elsewhere, not in the community, but outside the community. Part of the application would also be a wood skirting around the bottom of the trailer, just for a little bit of aesthetics, but it is a modular trailer and intended for temporary purpose. There is a condition, and the applicant wishes to only use the trailer for a period of three years, and that is the timing sought and asked for, and we recommend approval of the three-year timeframe. Should they need to use it longer than that, they would have to come back and essentially renew the conditional use permit. But I think the intention is to remove it at that time and think about additional permanent classrooms. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. We do recommend approval at this time.
Questions for staff?
Yes. Go back to the picture, the overview, please.
That one?
Yeah, that one. So I know where the church is, because I've been in it several times. The building with the white top to the south on that picture, right, that's smack in the middle. What is that used for?
I think it's a gym, isn't it?
Okay. So what's the building to the west of that then?
Additional classroom.
Mr. Wilson, why don't you just have the applicant come up? Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Warren Bishop Adams. I live at 2010 Sherwood Road, Ashley. I'm on the school board and working to get this approved. The white building or with the white roof, that is a, there's other classrooms there, but it's primarily the gymnasium. Right next to that is additional classrooms, and then the church and, well- This is the church auditorium here. We have classrooms in here, and then these two buildings. Our enrollment right now is 280 students. We're already anticipating 300 students next year, and we're outgrowing our classrooms. We're wanting a temporary classroom so we can have time to plan for additional. We have plans, but we've got to get approval and funding for new buildings. So to accommodate the students at this point in time, we just needed extra classrooms.
I understand. My concern is having it that close to Bell Avenue. If the other buildings are classrooms also, why are we not tucking it in the back where it's not going to be seen as much?
And I, just being able to get to it. Right behind this area here is elementary playground, so there's no room to put it here. Moving it here would get it as far off of Bell Avenue as we could. We've already got tree lines on this side, there were battered trees in. We didn't want to move it over here because this is possibly the area that we'd want to put an addition on here or here, so it would, if we put it there and then we had to get the other building started, it would be right in the way of any additional remodeling that we want to do to the building when we saw approval.
So is there any kind of screening between boundary line to the homes there to the west?
There's existing staggered course of evergreen trees, and one of our conditions is that with some of them that are dead or dying at this time, that they would go ahead and replant those as well, make sure that that's green is up and running.
So the zoning code allows for only 45 days for a modular unit like this to be created?
Well, yeah, it's not just modular units, but there are a number of uses that are captured within that section. This is one of them. Same thing, if you'll recall, with temporary sailor, sales trailer at the ravines at Old Tangi site, the same code section. Obviously, they just didn't write a separate section, or we haven't written, rewritten a section for just modular classroom use, which, I think, pretty obviously is going to go longer than 45 days in pretty much any situation.
Right now, Delaware City Schools provides a special ed classroom, and that's a trailer that's sitting on our property, and it's been there about eight or nine years at this point in time, and that's owned by Delaware City Schools, and they operate that.
You say that's on your property right now?
That, that's right here. That is this building. Over here. Yeah, same, same notice. And that's owned by Delaware City Schools.
Delaware City School comes on your property to the what?
They, they have a special ed program that they, they fund the teachers and fund the program, and we have students that go to it.
But they're students from your school?
Right. Right.
And the other buildings adjacent to that are like a maintenance shed, or?
Right. One of them's maintenance storage, well, both of them are just old storage buildings.
Okay.
They're not classrooms at all.
And the one that's the classroom is the one that kind of looks like a semi-trailer from above?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. That's a single wide trailer. It's 12 wide and 64 feet long.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
Is there any place else we can put it besides those houses?
I mean, it's probably not the answer you want to hear, but I think that is probably, if you're going to have a modular classroom, that that location outside of the driveway, as they have it shown today, is probably the best place, given their uses on the site today. For example, we just talked about, they already have a modular trailer right there.
What about the edge of that building?
Long classroom building.
The edge of this one?
I think she's on the, on the west side of the classroom building.
I don't know for a fact, but I would imagine it might block ingress.
Just, I'm searching. Did we get the bathroom thing worked out?
Well, no, we didn't, and the other thing, the other thing...
It measures about 280 feet.
Yeah, the other unusual aspect of this case, you'll see it right up in the staff for about the building code. We don't typically do that in these cases. However, there's been a lot of conversation between chief building official and the applicant. You'll see some comments about that. It's not really germane to zoning, other than we have a condition that they would have to meet all of state building code requirements, which in this case looks like it's going to require the applicant, if they get approval here at Planning and Council, to go to the Board of Building Appeals on a number of subjects, and they may not receive those appeals. If they don't receive those appeals, they have two choices, either don't do the trailer or meet whatever requirements that body has. And some of those may end up being significant as the state building code just changed with respect to commercial. And they're aware, they've worked with Jerry, and they're aware of those. But there's no point in taking that step, because they don't get this stuff.
Right.
Gotcha. Really, by the zone, and we could certainly talk about placement and buffering and screening and all the things we normally talk about, but this section of the code does allow these, it's more about the duration of time.
So the case before us is, is literally just about the duration, correct?
Correct. Modular classroom trailers are allowed, although it is within your purview. City Council will talk about where they go on buffering and that sort of stuff.
And then, do we just want to ask, can we put it here, can we put it here? How do you want to do it?
It's just about the duration, though.
I almost think we've got a few more hurdles to get over before they eventually get this.
Yeah, and I mean, wherever we move, it's going to impact distance where the streams are, so. Okay. Any more questions, or do you guys wish to make a motion or decision on this?
Is the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that part. Any more questions for the applicant tonight? Seeing none, thank you. At this time, I'll invite any member of the public up to speak on this particular case tonight, if you wish. All right, seeing none. Now I will bring it back to the commission. Thank you for that intervention, Dave.
I'll move to approve 2018-1061, the staff conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger, second by Mayor Riggle.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Volnek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item D under regular business, could the clerk please read that into the roll?
Item D, Stockdale Farms, case one, 2018-1173, a request by Terra Alta LLC for approval of an amended preliminary development plan for Stockdale Farms consisting of 322 single-family units on 150.99 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located at the northeast corner of Bromiller and Pollock Roads. Case two, 2018-1174, a request by Terra Alta LLC for approval of an amended preliminary subdivision plat for Stockdale Farms consisting of 322 single-family units on 150.99 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located at the northeast corner of Bromiller and Pollock Roads. Case three, 2018-1176, a request by Terra Alta LLC for approval and amended final development plan for Stockdale Farms Phase One consisting of 64 single-family lots on approximately 42.414 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located on the northeast corner of Bromiller and Pollock Roads. And case four, 2018-1177, a request by Terra Alta LLC for approval and amended final subdivision plat for Stockdale Farms Phase One consisting of 64 single-family lots on approximately 42.414 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located at the northeast corner of Bromiller and Pollock Roads.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, I pre-apologize, I'm going to have a few changes to the recommended conditions, and we'll get there when they get there.
Fair enough.
However, we are amending Stockdale Farms again, but I think with each amendment, it keeps getting better and better and better from all of staff departments' various perspectives. And that is certainly true in this case, and we appreciate the applicant bringing these forward. One of the biggest changes in recent years to Terra Alta and Stockdale is that they're now both under the control of the same developer and can be essentially master developed together. Hopefully, the Rogers piece will come forward before too long as well and make a cohesive, complete, master plan and master development. Obviously, they started as different developments and different developers, and so we're bringing them together now. But the location of Stockdale Farms is Pollock and Bromiller Road. The zoning is a planned mixed-use overlay with a detailed development text. Aerial photograph, should we need to refer to it. And again, the zoning is not being requested to be amended. The zoning will remain in place. This simply has to do with updating and amending the preliminary plan and plat for the entire development, as well as the first phase plan and plat, as you'll see as we go through here. But the development was divided into two sub-areas, A and B, really a single-family, single-lot subdivision, in A, and in B, a clustered home portion of the development as well. So let's run through very quickly some of the changes through the years, and I didn't even put in all of them, but just for posterity's sake. So this was the 2003 approved plan with the relocated Bromiller Road that was to go across a new bridge across the river. 2005, there was an approved plan, which changed the layout, but also had the relocated Bromiller Road and bridge. Skipping ahead, several iterations, in 2014, fairly recently, this plan was approved that did not have a relocated Bromiller Road nor a bridge over the river, as that was really dropped out of the thoroughfare plan in intervening years and necessitated really reworking of this subdivision. The current approved preliminary development plan is circa 2015. There were a couple of minor amendments, and if I just flip back and forth, you might be able to see some of them. They're not particularly germane to this case, but the layout stayed essentially the same in 2015 with a few notable differences. I want to point out a couple of them here because, because they do impact, and they're the explanation for some of the changes that are before you tonight. The main entrance in the box at the bottom of the screen was a T-intersection with Bromiller Road. There were three lots and an intersecting road fairly close to that main intersection. That was a subject of a lot of discussion through that period with the neighbors and public comment and staff and council and planning commission. There was also a full access cut on the west side, as there was only one road proposed across the ditch, the creek, and that was in a future section, it was on the north side of the development. And so those were all items of discussion at that time. Nevertheless, this was the approved plan, and it was found that the merits overall of this plan outweighed the previous plans that we saw. However, I think today, we have a much improved plan that addresses a lot of those issues. Number one, the main intersection has simply changed in type from a T-intersection to a roundabout. This moves Bromiller, fixes some of the issues related to Bromiller Road that were brought up. It moves Bromiller Road a portion of it further into their property. It allows for enhancement of the landscaping and entryway features. And I have a diagram that might show that better. This is not it. This does show you the overall development plan and plat, and in red, it's very hard on this diagram, but in red is Phase One. So we'll get there as well. With the colors, it's just, it's hard to show you. I'm going to quickly click through some of the black and white images of the plan and plat as amended to get to some of the changes. I think you've had an opportunity to review this. Again, Phase One is in yellow. This is the amended subdivision plat for Phase One. The actual plat, which was in your packet, which is impossible to show on one sheet, so it's a series of three. And again, here's the 2015 plan. So I want to show you this because we're really focusing on three areas. Number one, I started to talk about with respect to the roundabout, the elimination of the three lots right near the entrance, and the cul-de-sacking of the first road, which also provides for some pretty nice lots, but eliminates the closeness of that intersection to the main intersection. Item number two on the screen, a new road is proposed, a secondary road across the creek, which is really most desirable by traffic engineers, but also by our emergency forces as well. So now we will have two roads to the west side, and what that allows us to do is not have a full access point for point number three to Bromiller Road immediately across from the houses. This is actually going back to a version of the plan where it will be just for emergency access only until the two access points on the public streets are developed, and then that entryway can become a bike path, essentially, access point to the subdivision. So those are all three, I think, welcome changes from the staff's perspective. All the landscaping, tree preservation, there's a payment per house and per unit for trees in this case, in addition to preservation requirements. The entryway landscaping and the overall design and ethic, the recreation facilities are all as they were designed. I will say that the developer, in regard to master planning this in Terra Alta, may decide to bring forward some changes. They may be major changes and may be minor changes to the recreation facilities to tie them all together. I personally am hoping for some major changes, and that might be, that might be very nice, but there's always money involved, so that's still being a point of discussion. And then item number four in red was brought up by an adjacent neighbor. The developer's aware of this, the neighbor is aware of this and was not here tonight because he had a family gathering, and I told him I would communicate his message to you and ensure that this was included. In our last approvals, there were a row of evergreen trees along where number four is, that north property line adjacent to that neighbor. And one of the conditions at that time extended it, the lots were numbered differently, guys, so stay with me here, but there were extended from lots 96 to 102. Those are lots 165 to 171 now. And so that was just not included on the resubmission, and we want to make sure that that condition continues forward, that there would be, and I will add this at this time formally to staff recommendation for case 2018-1173, the amended preliminary development plan, condition number five, to be the addition of a continuous buffer of eight-foot-high Norway spruce trees to screen the adjacent home along lots numbered in this proposal, 165 through 171, and shown in Phase Three of the plan. The other change I need to note for you in our conditions, and again, I pre-apologize, is that apparently we failed to count the number of lots correctly as staff, so we'll... is that apparently we failed to count the number of lots correctly as staff, so we'll own that. You guys own the omission of the trees. But for case number 2018-1175, we referenced sixty-four single-family lots. It should be sixty-six. And for case 2018-1176, we referenced sixty-four lots, and it should be sixty-six. So I formally make those amendments to our recommendations as well. All other conditions and recommendations remain as written in the staff report. And I think that really covers the substance of the changes. The applicant is here with his engineering and design teams as well. We appreciate you all running through this process. I know you want to get started as fast as possible with improvements and get to development after fifteen, twenty years, however long it's been at this point.
Seventy-five.
What's that?
I think you mentioned seventy-five and seventy-six.
There's my seventy-five.
So it's seven-eleven, seventy-six, and eleven-seventy-seven.
So you're telling me I made the mistake twice?
Yeah.
On the record, you had mentioned case eleven-seventy-five.
That's how I read it, and seventy-six and seventy-seven, so we can...
Let me eliminate the numbers. Okay? So in K, in the amended final development plan, Phase One, it references sixty-four lots. It should be sixty-six. And in the amended final subdivision plat, Phase One, it references sixty-four lots. It should be sixty-six, regardless of the case number involved. Was there another one I messed up?
Okay.
Apologize for that. We recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions. As amended, amended.
I, well, I guess I kind of hate to see that the bridge has been removed from the future plan list. I always thought that was a good idea, but I assume that the traffic studies and everything have borne out that it isn't necessary any longer, so.
Yeah, I think that was about three versions ago.
Pardon me?
I think that was about three versions ago, the plan it was removed to, so yeah.
I thought with the new development on twenty-three, I can't remember the name of the road or whatever, it might be a really good idea to be able to get directly over there, but I understand the expense of a bridge.
So, entry point three, the emergency access point. We've seen some inventive ways to make certain that people don't see this as a road, and they end up accidentally driving down that. It goes to the road. It goes to Bromiller, has a curb cut there. What ways is it going to ensure? It's going to be tightened up?
Yeah, so it would be twelve-foot wide. It's what we have been doing. It's what was approved for Glen Ross on both the east and west side of Whiterborne or Eagle Walk, depending upon what it's called there. So it would be twelve-foot wide. We would request that it be designed so it looks like a driveway apron. We could treat, they could treat it with landscaping. Ultimately, when the other access point goes into the east, which is a right-in, right-out access for the TIS, that apron could completely come out, if that's what is desired. It could remain, but it could come out also, and it would be solely for pedestrian and bike path use.
The fire department has been good working with us, engineers and planners and designers, to really minimize in cases like this where they don't need to put outriggers out along that particular path, minimize the width to just what their truck needs, like we did in communities at Glen Ross, now that it's situation-dependent, what they're trying to get to. So it works in this case.
The required width is typically twenty-foot wide for a fire access, and then recognizing that they will not put the outriggers out on this drive, they will get on the physical roadway to do that, they will accept twelve-foot. If I might add, too, the change of the intersection there in Circle One, creating that roundabout, solved a couple of concerns that were present with Dunlop County and the township in this vicinity, and it has been vetted out with all the township, well, the township citizens who attended the township meeting where this was presented and shared. The iteration prior to this, the main road was slightly askew from the Methuselah Drive that goes to the south there, so our first intent was to align that, so they were aligned. And then the other part about the roundabout is that it will be slowing drivers down. It creates a focal point for this subdivision, and it creates, I wouldn't say a safe speed, but it does slow down speeds in this area. And if you're familiar, there's some grade and topography that's unique for Flat Delaware.
I agree. Thank you.
Good point.
Yeah. Thank you.
So there's no direct way to get on in and out of that subdivision from Pollock?
No.
Correct. One of the early versions of the plan had that, and there's grade, there were some neighbor objections and that sort of thing. The only thing that would come down a Pollock Road, like Terra Alta, is a sidewalk, a pedestrian connection at some point, likely where you, you see the green space in there, but that will be determined through the, through those final plan and plat processes.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'll invite the applicant up. If you could just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is David Dunston with Advanced Civil Design, 422 Beecher Road in Gehanna. And actually, I don't have a whole lot more to add. David does a good job of preparing these things and volumes of history and the updates. I think he and Kerry both covered the, both covered the changes pretty well. We did have an entrance at Area Three, and between having two entrances that close, talking with the county, it wasn't safe. There were long turn lanes, and Kerry made the point, the main thing was slowing traffic down. There are a lot of people on this road that travel at fairly high speed, I'm told. This should help. It also, in doing that, then we did have to create the other street across the street. But that was to give access so that the fire folks could get in and have that, have additional access into that. I think this is a better layout. I think it works very well. Relative to Number Four, David, if I may, explain that one and explain to you commission numbers. That was agreed to, to put it into that length and that number of lots for those Norway spruce trees. The original drawing that we had for the landscaping drawings did not show it that way, but as denied, it was written into the conditions. So when we went back to pick the drawings up from three years ago, nobody thought to come back and look at the condition that was written in. And as soon as it was brought up, we remembered that, hey, yes, we did agree to that in the conditions. So it's something that our clients were only agreed to. We'll hold to the original commitment. That's not a problem.
The neighbor also had a question about if one of those dies, would it be replaced? What is the height that would be replaced at, those sorts of things? And my response was, yes, it would, they're required to remain as a condition of this in addition to the tree line that's there. And if a tree dies, it would have to be replaced. It's obviously not going to be replaced if it's thirty-foot tall when it dies, at thirty feet, but it'd be replaced at the, I believe it's the eight-foot requirement at plant. And that would be an HOA responsibility. They're aware of that.
Right. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
How soon do you hope to break ground?
I think my client will start digging tomorrow after we've approved plans. We're pretty close. We've got, I think we've got pretty much everything worked out with the city and with the county, I believe.
Yeah, I think just a few, I would call them minor items. The sanitary plan could probably be executed and started ahead of the site plan. It would be the off-site sanitary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will open this case up to the public. If there are any members of the public here this evening that wish to speak on this case, please feel free to come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the planning commission. It's the wish of the commission.
Well, if anyone else will, I'll move, approve 2018-1173 with staff conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Excuse me, I forgot the row of spruce trees. We need to add that in the motion.
I don't think so, because I amended my formal recommendation to include that.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm covering mine to see. I'll move, we approve 2018-1174 with staff conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Move 2018, approval 1176, with the change in from sixty-four to sixty-six lots and all other staff conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Move approval of case 2018-1177 with the change from sixty-four to sixty-six lots and all other staff conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Moving on to the next item under regular business, item E. Could the clerk please read that into the record?
Item E, Willowbrook Sections Two, Phases One through Three, The Old Adelaide Park, Section Three. Case one, 2018-1219, a request by Medrock LLC for approval of a final development plan for Willowbrook, Section Two, Phases One through Three, Old Adelaide Park, Section Three, consisting of eighty-five single-family lots on approximately twenty-eight-point-five acres, zoned R3 PUD. One-family residential with a planned unit development and is located north of Boulder Drive, south of Cobblestone Drive, east of Harmony Drive, and west of Canal Street. Case two, 2018-1220, a request by Medrock LLC for approval of a final subdivision plat for Willowbrook, Section Two, Phases One through Three, Old Adelaide Park, Section Three, consisting of eighty-five single-family lots on approximately twenty-eight-point-five acres, zoned R3 PUD. One-family residential with a planned unit development and is located north of Boulder Drive, south of Cobblestone Drive, east of Harmony Drive, and west of Canal Street.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, as anticipated with the recent flats on Houck, case in discussion, quickly fallen on its heels is, are these cases, which really bring forward the next sections of what we used to call Adelaide Park, we're now calling it Willowbrook, Section Two, forward for eighty-five single-family lots as originally preliminarily laid out. So the location is south of Cobblestone Drive and north of our YMCA Community Park. The zoning is PUD. Aerial photograph should we need it. It's essentially tabletop farmland. I have the preliminary, original preliminary approved plan here if we need to reference it, but again, the section highlighted is the subject area, and the proposal is in accordance with that. So let's go through this systematically, but quickly here. Willowbrook, Section Two, Old Adelaide, Section Three, for those of you playing the home game, are the eighty-five lots shown here outlined in green and include the roads Boswell Street, Pagoda Loop, Wenton Drive, and a portion of Boulder Drive. Your action, city council's action on these cases would approve the final plan and final plat for that section and all those roads shown in that section. Additionally, Phases One and Two shown here in this case are really related to plating the right-of-way for Boulder Drive, shown in blue. There's a bit of reserve area that's landscaped, and none of the conditions that came forward and flat some Houck would, would be changed by this. And it would also plat the right-of-way for the future phases of Boulder Drive to the east of Willowbrook, Section Two, so that all of Willow, all of Boulder Drive would essentially be platted with this action, the right-of-way. The lots that are being platted are in Section Two. The whole roadway is being engineered together, which makes sense, and the engineering plans are, are being reviewed by the engineering department if they haven't been approved already by them. So what are we plating in terms of lots? Willowbrook, Section Two, again, this is on two sheets, I'm sorry, but this is the way it is. There's eighty-five lots. Here is the north portion, and here is the south portion, including that portion of Boulder Drive. So all staff and departments have had an opportunity to review this. We have some conditions suggested that the applicant is aware of. One of them came out of really the last case, so we've talked about it with the applicant, is that the HOA declarations and covenants for this subject section don't preclude the possibility of merging the existing Adelaide sections with this section at a point in the future, if the residents wish to do that at a point in the future, so that they're all together under one HOA. They may choose, as two different HOAs, not to do that, as well. But in terms of the way that the documents were originally filed with respect to Adelaide, we can't just require those to be put together. But once the residents are in control of their HOAs, they could decide to merge, and we want to make sure the declarations, covenants just don't preclude that ability from happening. So that's probably the only unusual condition in this case, and that's really given the length of time in development here. Staff does recommend approval of both cases, and we're happy to answer any questions that
Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll invite the applicant to come forward. Just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Ron Sabatino, 3895 Stone Ridge Lane. I think staff has been very complete. I have nothing to add except the Cavs game tipped off forty-five minutes ago.
And the score is?
The score is. Stacy, Stacy made me turn off my cell phone, so I don't know.
I just told you to silence it. I told you to turn it off. We got cable on each TV.
Turn one on, man.
Any questions for the applicant?
So we're not going to make this condition on Cavs winning before you...
I would not agree to that. It's not looking good.
All right, well, there's no questions for the applicant. Thank you. And just to follow procedure, if there's any member of the public here this evening that wishes to speak on this particular case, please come forward. Seeing no comment from the public, I will bring it back to the commission. What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion, we approve 2018-1219, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mayor Riggle?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve 2018-1220, along with all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second. By Mayor Riggle?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, item F. Could the clerk please read that into the record?
Heatherton, Phase Seven, Case One, 2018-1240, a request by Pulte Homes for approval of a of a final development plan for Heatherington, Phase Seven, consisting of 28 single-family lots on approximately 7.198 acres, zoned R3 PRD, one-family residential with a planned residential district and located west of Houck Road, north of Boulder Drive, and south of Benjamin Drive. Case Two, 2018-1242, a request by Pulte Homes for approval of a final subdivision plat for Heatherington, Phase Seven, consisting of 28 single-family lots on approximately 7.198 acres, zoned R3 PRD. Oh, sorry. One-family residential with a planned residential district and located west of Houck Road, north of Boulder Drive, and south of Benjamin Drive.
I get a break, this is Jordan.
I'll try to keep it brief. Just to get a super quick history, in 2001, city council passed a planned unit development for Leonard Woods, name later changed to Heatherington in 2013. In 2014, council approved an amended preliminary development plan and subdivision plat for Phases Four to Eight. In '15, those finals were approved for Five. In '16, they were also passed for Phase Six. And now, here we have Phase Seven for 28 single-family lots on approximately seven acres. The site's currently zoned R3 PRD. Here's aerial map, if you need me to go back to the aerial, just let me know. Here's the approved preliminary plan. It's a little tough to read, so I'm just gonna skip again to the plat. Access to Phase Seven comes from Benjamin Road through the north, and Boulder Drive from the south, through Hutchinson Street. The lot sizes are a minimum of 7,100 square feet to 13,677 square feet with 60 feet wide minimum frontages. The minimum house size for a ranch-style house is 1,500 square feet and 1,800 square feet for two-story. Both of those is for a three-bedroom house, and any additional bedrooms would add 200 square feet to the totals. Design standards would have to comply with Chapter 1171, and that would include eight-inch overhang, four-inch window trim, and 25% natural materials. There's no open space in this development, but there's a pocket park in Section Five and just south of this development. There's 32 acres of dedicated open space for a future park, so we find that to be a sufficient amount of open space. The existing mound and landscaping along the eastern portion of the site would have to be extended along Houck Road and Boulder Drive, and that shall be maintained by the HOA. Staff recommends approval for the final development plan and the final subdivision plat with nine conditions, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Just to be clear, they'll have an access from Houck to Boulder. There'll be, that's gonna be developed in this. What I'm assuming is that the south, the bottom of the green square right there, that's another access point there. Benjamin Street down to Hutchinson.
Yeah.
Okay.
Boulder Drive is being engineered as one piece, as one engineering plan. This subdivision, this section would build that piece of it, but I think they may intend to just build it all at once, too. To be determined. We wish they would.
We'll ask Joel.
Wes Joel, he's sat through the entire meeting, so you should ask him a question. Yes, there will be another access point to this section.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Have the applicant come up, just state your name and your address for the record. Thank you for your personal intensity tonight.
No, thank you for having me. I appreciate you accommodating me. Joel West with Pulte Homes, 275 Metro Place South, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. Again, nothing to really discuss on our part. Staff done a great job, engineering, planning, very helpful in working through the conditions, and we're completely fine with all of those. In terms of the development, we are doing Phase Seven here as soon as possible, obviously, and then we'll be rolling right into Section Eight, which is the last section, probably doing that, starting over the winter, finishing it next year. So, I know Jonathan, I believe, wants some dirt for your future park across the street, so we'll be happy to continue to have those discussions with him about that, too.
Can you address the Boulder Drive?
I'm sorry, what was the comment again?
Yeah, just, so in the, we say that there's gonna be, there's an access point to Benjamin Street down to Hutchinson, and then off of Houck Road, there's gonna be Boulder Drive, right?
That's correct. It's a straight shot right along that part. Not gonna build it all at once. Not gonna build it all at once. Try. Close, but yes, not all. Lot of stuff going on this year, so I can choose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll invite any member of the public who's here to speak on this particular case this evening. Please come forward. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve 2018-1240 with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Vonek?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve 2018-1242 with all staff recommendations.
Motion to Mr. Vonek?
Yes. Second. Second, I'm sorry.
Second by Mayor Riggle?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
We'll do our best. All right, moving on to the next item under regular business, the planning director's report.
Keep it short tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just an update on the comprehensive plan, we are working through 90 applicants for the steering committee, which was an incredible number, and it just speaks highly of our community, that that many people are wanting to be involved in this big project for that amount of time. Some of you have applied as well. I do have some draft recommendations in front of the city manager. We have tried to accommodate every parameter of geography and diversity that we think we possibly can and be reasonable about, especially given the pool of applicants that we had. We had many more males than females, why, just to let you know, but I think the draft recommendation balances out females and males about 50/50, pretty close, on that parameter. But I'm excited by the group, and we're certainly going to, our intention is to put all 90 people and more, hopefully all 40,000 people, to work in this process and get our input that we need to make a truly community-driven plan. I think the manager and I are going to, and the clerk are gonna work to bring forward a formal recommendation to council for their meeting on Monday, to try to keep closer to our timelines that we initially laid out, or a little bit behind, but that's okay, it's gonna happen, this important part of the process, and the city council will ultimately make the decision. You know, as of now, we have just citizen-led committee, and if council chooses to add a council member, then that's fine, too, that's their choice. As far as I'm concerned, the council's involved in every part of this, whether they sort of wanna be or not. And certainly, all of you are as well, whether you're ultimately placed on the steering committee or not as well. So, because the plan will come before you at a point in time for a recommendation to city council, so hopefully all of you stay engaged and involved. But we're also working through the detailed scope as laid out in the RFP originally, and there's a lot of detail to work through in that to make sure that we're gonna perform the tasks that we all want to perform during this process. So, I'm excited, it's good, and the consultant team's working well with staff at this point, so I'm gonna be looking forward to bringing that to you. That's all I have this evening.
Excellent.
Moving on to commission member comments and discussion.
I have nothing.
Nothing? True.
Just, Dave, great job tonight, holding that board down and getting us through these last three hours, and he's got a text from Laney, said he owes you big time.
I didn't get that one.
Bottomless fear.
I need a screenshot of that.
Anything? Jim?
Just looking forward to seeing the first house, finally get built on Terreaulta. That is, then, I guess I got about 18 years on that, sir.
Wow. Back a long time.
Anything?
No, great job. Great job.
I don't have anything, other than to thank staff for all the great work you're doing. Keep it up, thank you. Great to have you guys here, I think you do a great job. It's been a interesting few months to start the year. Hopefully, we're at the peak and we're gonna maybe level off on sanity. Anyway.
Yeah, we're headed your way.
That's all right, man, keep 'em coming, keep 'em coming. Okay, so, next regular meeting will be July 18th, 2018. Any known schedule issues?
Say, July 18th?
July 18th.
Unless you want to meet on the 4th, so we moved it to the third Wednesday.
All right.
No, I'm here for 18.
18?
No, 18's our, me.
All right. If you run into any scheduling conflicts, just drop Elaine a note or pick up the phone and let her know. And with that, we are going to be adjourned at exactly 10 p.m.